Go ahead and start if you, everyone will stand and we'll have Commissioner Lenore do our identification.
Lord Almighty, we ask that you look over our county citizens, our county employees, and all of those folks down south with the fires, with our neighbors in Arizona and their new fire. Please look over those and fighting those fires and take care of us. Give us power, strength, and courage to make good decisions tonight in your name we pray.
Mr. Bixson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the Constitution of America, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on our agenda, we have a presentation and we have Lisa Gomez. If both come up, we'll do this presentation.
Good afternoon, Commission Chair, members of the Commission. Very pleased to present this item to you. If you don't mind, I'll just summarize what was on the, on the
Nomination.
Nomination form, thank you. And sue too, please. Sue the supervisor. During a routine office visit with an MWRC client, Kristen noticed differences in her client such as a deepening color in the forehead scar, his complaint of ringing in his ears and increasing inability to comprehend their conversation. Because she was already alerted to his past trauma due to a recent training, trauma-informed training provided by Jennifer Mitchell, Kristen was more acutely aware of the changing mental and physical conditions in her client. She asked permission to walk him across the street to the emergency department and waited with him until he was admitted. We later learned that her client was having a stroke. The client was released earlier in the day, that day by law enforcement from a homeless shelter program due to his reportedly strange behavior. He came in to talk to Kristen about it. You know, she could have easily sent him to a different shelter or sent him to another person to, to help because she wasn't getting very far with him. But she took the time to listen and paid attention to his behaviors and compared them to what she already knew about him and got him over to San Juan Regional for medical treatment. The extra time, care, and comfort provided by Kristen that day saved his life. As a result of Kristen's actions, San Juan County would like to recognize her with a significant achievement award.
We have a achievement award to give to you and I just outside of the commissioners to tell them. All right, next on the agenda, we have the campus board. So I need to have a motion to go into the campus board.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
There is no opposition. Motion carries. Okay, and jump in. Free provision of balance. Four. I really think someday we will take the time and actually make you a presentation to you. When you go to the vendor store, you're there to pick up something, you're there to pull it off the shelf, but it's hard to find. That's the thing. That's particularly working during the holidays. But his crew, being short-staffed and mayhem, it will be all. Some of those started for the week before. So, yes, five locations. They provide support all day long and bring results or supplies in on election night. And for this election, it was around midnight. So it's a long day, not just for us, but for many others in the county. Keith from ITC assists us with the results and our websites. And his department also assists us with connection issues. There really wasn't a whole, very many of those, but they're always there to, to make sure these travel we need. We play songs and local came from IC. If they could just figure out how to stop having updates done during an election, that would be amazing. I'd also like to thank Amber from HR and Sarah from Finance. They did an amazing job getting all of our early voting workers entered and paid. And now they're working on all of our election day workers. Our workers, just like everybody else that helps our town, those workers out there, we could not conduct an election without them. The legal department and the management office are always on call and ready to help any need. And we've had to call. Under Sheriff Tanner always coordinates the helicopter. You can go hard farm results at weekends. We're seven of those southern reservation sites. Lacy from the Antec Post Office does an amazing job coordinating with the other hotel firms throughout the county to make sure that we can either go pick up their ballots and bring them in, or she has even done that for us. That way they don't get sent to Albert Frick and have to send back because then we're almost the deadline. And again, an extra special thank you. When you all go and vote, just please tell those coworkers that you appreciate what they're doing. I know most of you do anyways, but we truly cannot do it without them. And everybody, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Shelby. And you personally mentioned that. Now, if I could just, you know, pass, I would agree at some point before the general election, good idea.
You got six months.
Already working on it.
The motion is certified.
Have a motion.
I'll second it.
I'm per two second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing the opposition, motion carries. Okay, thank you. And I need a motion to go out of the campus board.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Set to move.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, they're made. Okay, now we need a motion to go into the Board of Finance.
Then fair move, move into the Board of Finance.
Second. I'm per two second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Hearing non-motion carries. This is Toby.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission. Hopefully you're having a wonderful windy day. I am here today requesting that you approve the revision for in our investment policy resolution number 212274. So we began back in 2019 looking at our investment policy and we worked with, helped trust our previous advisors and they gave us several recommendations. And then we were waiting for language from, some correct, corrective language from the legislature in 2020. And so we didn't get it done in 2019. Then 2020, the language was passed and then we didn't get it done in 2021 just because of COVID and everything that's going on. So we do have what we think is a really good policy. Some of the things that we've done is we've worked with legal to update the current, update to the current statutes so that everything, any changes that were made, we were able to incorporate those. We've updated the list of qualified banks, credit unions, and saving and loan associations to reflect closures and like USC Eagle is a relatively new bank. So we have them there. We used to, the former, I'm sorry, the former policy had a cash management requirement of no less than biweekly, but I do it monthly. And so I'm just requesting that we, we change it to monthly so I would be in compliance with our audit. Our unrestricted cash available requires requirement, we used to have a requirement that we would invest all unrestricted cash available. But with the previous rates, the way they were, there was just no place to put them. So in order to kind of comply with the audit, I'm requesting we change that to goal. I would like to, I've added language to clarify NMSA 61024-1, adding U.S. Agency Securities to Eligible Investments, adding eligible investments that we've had a couple of different vehicles that were added to Class A counties in the last couple of years that we can invest in. I'm not sure I will take advantage of those vehicles, but it will be in the policy should I decide to. Added language to clarify an investment shall have a maturity date that does not exceed four years from the date of purchase, meaning I can only go out four years on my, on any of my investments. And that kind of protects us and our future treasures. They don't get stuck with some long legacies. And then we added language to allow an investment manager or advisor to utilize their broker relationships and require they provide the treasure with a preferred list of brokers. We don't currently have an, an investment advisor, but if we did, then we would provide them with a list of our approved brokers. And then should they have anybody they'd want to work with, I think we would have to get them to be approved by our requirements. So that's pretty much it. I'm just requesting approval. If you have any questions.
Are there any questions, Ms. Paul? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm fair move to approve resolution 21 dash 22 dash 74.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Post. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Now I need a motion to go out of Board of Finance.
So moved.
I'll second.
Yeah, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. All right, next the regular meeting, approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Are there any changes?
No, no change. Madam Chair. I would move to approve the agendas.
Second. I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none. Motion carries. Then next on the consent agenda, we have nine items. And the first one is consideration of approval of treasurer check register for May 2022. Number two, consideration of approval of finance check register for May, oh, okay, finance check register for May 2022. Three, consideration of approval of budget adjustment number 12, resolution number 212268. Consideration of approval of regular meeting minutes from May 3, 2022. Number five, consideration of renewal of proposal number 19 dash 20 dash 22, major medical aggregate and specific stop-loss insurance to Sunlight Financial. Number six, consideration of DWI grant agreement, number 23 DG24 with DFA slash LVD of the local DWI program. Number seven, consideration of approval of resolution numbers 212269, comma 212270, and 222171, supporting New Mexico DOT 2022 to 2023 local government road fund award and associate block fee of agreements. Number eight, consider of approval of resolution number 212272 and 212273, disposition of surplus and or obsolete counted property. Number nine, consideration of approval to renew the referral bonus program for the sheriff's office. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Hearing none. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Next, we have new business and we have Ms. Trudy Tillen, considerations application for variance from San Juan County cannabis regulation ordinance number 124 for Blacoponics 81 Road 4599, Langco, New Mexico. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I know you guys would miss me if I didn't come up with a variance hearing.
Wonder what happened to you.
Today we have Matthew Montoya of Blacoponics submitting a variance petition application to community development department. On April 25th, there was a typo on the application form that had a wrong date on it. Blacoponics is seeking a variance from section three, the ordinance 120, minimum distance separation from a residence requirement. Blacoponics wishes to start a cannabis cultivation production facility on the property located at 181 Brook 4599 in Langco. The business is planning both indoor and outdoor grow areas on the property. The pro security fence of the cultivation area is within 300 feet of four residences. The applicant is seeking a variance to last the lifetime of the business. Public hearing was held before hearing officer William C. Bertzoff on June 1, 2022. Hearing officers submitted written findings and conclusions and recommends requests for variance be granted.
Thank you. And the applicants aren't here in there. Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Trudy Tillen?
Let's see, we had a hearing on it, right?
Correct.
Hi.
How many people attended the hearing?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
How many people attended the hearing?
Right, Madam Chair, Commissioner Sullivan, there was the applicant, staff, and one resident.
And none of the residents, and they all know about it, huh?
Yes, sir. We did do a hand delivery to all the residents in the area by co-compliance.
Okay, I have a motion to approve it.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Yes, Chair. On here, it talks about sandstone bluff taking place of fence. Does that comply with the state requirements?
I'm unsure about whether or not the state will accept that or not. It is a high wall area. And I do know in previous cases, such as the San Juan River being a natural boundary, they did accept that in lieu of a fence. So there should be no issue with that.
But I suppose if the variance would be, would be unnecessary if the state didn't approve that or if we don't give approval to the state. I was just curious.
Madam Check Commissioners, that's correct. We don't issue permit unless we get the license from this.
Any other questions, comments?
No, I've moved to approve variance.
I have a second?
Yep.
Okay. I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Deputy Fire Chief Carden to present on post-state adoption of the 2021 International Fire Code.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good afternoon. I was asked to come to you in regards to the state, State Fire Marshal's Office is looking at adopting the new 2021 International Fire Code. Currently, the county operates under the 2015 International Code. It's a four-year cycle. And usually we skip a cycle because we try to mirror with whatever construction industry division and the building code is, we tried to mirror them. So right now, every city municipality and the county are currently under the 2015. There hasn't been a lot of changes in between these codes. And what I was asked to bring to you is this year in the 2021, there was a pretty major addition added to that. They brought in for the first time food trucks and mobile food vending transport vehicles, not only mobile, but just trailers. And one of the things that they're requiring is just like in a restaurant, they will be required to have a full hood suppression, fire suppression system installed in these. So one thing we did is we got together with the Farmington Fire Marshals and we got a letter and we've been going out to these food trucks and we've been kind of giving them a heads up that this is going to be coming down to, is will be affecting them at some point when they decide to adopt this because as the state adopts the code, we will have to adopt the code here in the county. And we didn't want any of the food vendors to be blindsided by this. So we wanted to go out and meet with them and talk to them. So we've been trying to educate them and, and get them, because it will be a large purchase for them. Most of these systems can run anywhere from 20 to $40,000. So we wanted to make sure that they were in the loop.
How much time do they have once it's completed?
So the state, I talked to the State Fire Marshal today and they are looking at trying to adopt the code sometime after July 1. With that being said, I, I know that you're talking with Chief Muller. I don't think that we would go out and shut anybody down just because, I, I think we need to give them ample time to, to try to get these systems in place. So I think we'll be very reasonable with them and making sure we can try to work with them and, and get this established.
Twenty to 40,000.
Yes, sir.
Pretty significant.
And then the only other thing I had real quick was again fireworks go on sale June 20. So we're expecting quite a bit of a uptick in fires. We will have our crews out patrolling. We do have several of us will be out doing parks patrol. And hopefully, again, we'll be sent, trying to get people out to Meege Park as much as possible. But we will have vendors opening up June 20 and sell. I stand for any questions.
Any questions or comments?
I do, Madam Chair. Um, have we had any fire truck fires without the suppression system in the last eight, two or three years?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I do not know of any in the county. I believe Farmington did have one food truck over by slaughterhouse that did catch fire. I could verify that, but I believe we have had one that was due to grease laden vapors. They ended up catching their, their trailer on fire. We have not had any in the county that I know. It's been reported deaths.
I just, I know how expensive they are and
Yes, sir.
inspections and everything else that comes with it, the hood cleanings. I mean, it's an expense that, that kind of goes on and on forever. And Madam Chair, if I may, Deputy Chief Carden, could you maybe share with the Commission, I know you did this morning at staff, meaning regarding the number of food trucks? It's an estimate out in the county.
Yes, so right now we're estimating what we've seen is about 30 food trucks. And we believe about half of them or a little less than half or do not have the proper, that are cooking what's considered grease laden vapors, whether it's breakfast, whatever they're doing. They don't have those suppression systems in place. So they're the ones, the other half do already have them. So it's just more of just information for them to know that they will now be on an annual inspection basis. But with the state passing this, we can be as stringent as them, but we can't be less stringent. So we just want to make sure that we've got the, the information out to them so they know.
And do you have to go out there or do they come to assert or to them or do they?
No, ma'am, we've been going out to them. Yes, ma'am.
Are there questions or comments?
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right, next on the agenda, we have the consideration of a Mandiant to San Juan County foul policy and procedure document by by resolution number 41, 22, 67, Mr. Botts.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good afternoon. I am standing before you to request approval of quite an overhaul of the existing travel policy and procedure document. It was last adopted, its amendments in 2009. We've used it for quite some time. But in the 2021 regular session, the state legislature passed Senate Bill 325, which ultimately took the amounts that were once in the statute of duty of legal, which took that out and has charged the Department of Finance Administration with the task of annually determining what those amounts should be. And really, that's meant to stay in line with the economy and rising costs. You know, it was passed in 2021. You know, it was certainly in the height of COVID. And so we, at the time, were looking at our ERP system. UNIS, one of the last modules we have, is employee expense module that allows us to electronically process requests and reconciliations. And so we're trying to time it with the implementation of that to allow for all of the specific changes to the policy as it relates to the electronic operating team. And so presented before you is a new policy that takes out all of those amounts. It just stipulates that it's determined by the Department of Finance Administration. It includes various changes related to the electronic system, one of which, I will say, we are waiting on some of the final issues to be worked out. And so we are requesting that this be approved effective July 1 with continued paper forms until we can get that electronic process going. But the last part of the policy change is really related to our culmination of all of the past years of questions or issues that have come up that we thought it would be best to give within this policy. It also includes FOSA-specific items. But we've shared it with all of the department heads, elected officials. They've been able to provide their input. I had emailed it to you all in advance. If you have any specific questions, if you'd like me to go over any specific items. Otherwise, I would ask that you all approve Resolution 21, 22, 67, which adopts this new travel policy.
Thank you. And the UNIS that, I just wanted to let the commission know they may not know that you could log on. And I was looking at earlier employee.
I did, you told me.
Number, and then a password. So Mr. Stark or Mr. Botts, whoever, show you how to log into that to be able to do that. There are any other questions or comments, Mr. Botts? Hearing done, and I make a motion.
So moved.
A second?
Madam Chairman, can we clarify that motion a little bit? Commissioner Sullivan, could you please state in more detail, is it to adopt the revised policy and resolution?
Yeah, we'll adopt the revised policy and resolution to the motion. I don't know what the, I don't know what the rest was.
Commissioner Sullivan, it's Resolution 21, 22, 67.
Okay, 21, 22, 67.
I would second that.
A first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing done, motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Mr. Hill, consideration of approval of rate adjustment and contract updates for McGee Park.
Good afternoon. In 2016, the San Juan County Commission approved the adjusted rates for McGee Park that are currently in effect today. McGee Park staff has reviewed the current rates and contract and believe that now is the time to update both of them. Staff has reviewed our rates and compared those to other venues in the Farmington area as well as Southern Colorado. The comparison of other facilities is difficult in some cases as McGee Park facilities are second to none and not always able to find a pull-up facilities for comparison. During this review, it's evident that some of our rates need to be streamlined. In other cases, the rates need to be increased, and a few we actually decrease. These increases range from 10% to 20% in most cases. The rates changes include building rentals, room rentals, additional fees, pavilion services, arena, and parking lot services. The contract was reviewed and approved by the legal department. The new contract now includes verbeage for pandemic issues that we may face in the future and includes language that some promoters must abide by, ordinance 95, the San Juan County Business Relations. And if I may, I'd like to add just a couple of notes that we've added provisions for nonprofits told meetings at McGee Park that no charge, that we've never had that provision before. And then happy to announce that our youth policy completely reviewed that with the extension office, and all that is remaining the same also. So with that, staff requests approval of the fee schedule and contract revisions, and I stand for questions.
And I was noticing on the Memorial Coliseum that there was a standard rate and a catch rate, premium rate. So those have been renewed?
Yes, they have. Those rates go back before 2009, I think back in the good old days, maybe, where we would bring in the large concerts, Willie Nelson and those types of events. And so I think the directors back then of the department felt like if they were making a large amount of money, that maybe this county should enjoy some of that. But what I've seen since I've taken over or came to work for San Juan County is those additional rates and fees are hardly ever used. In today's economy, they haven't been used in numerous years. As you try to bring in a promoter such as Arena Cross or Monster Trucks, they're trying to bring those entertainment events to our area and have a hard time making a big amount of money. Obviously, they're making so money. I've kind of looked at, you know, whether we're doing a rodeo or Arena Cross or a Monster Truck event and the time spent to get that arena ready for those events. It's all about the same. And so to me, our goal is to recover the costs and a little bit of, you know, on the other side of that, to cover costs and maintenance and lighting and heating and those types of things. So I find that it's just better to streamline those, have one fee, makes it simple for everybody to understand.
I appreciate that. Who's less confused? The track people. Thank you for all your work. Lot of support.
And Madam Chair, if I could, just as a point of clarification, our policies Mr. Hill referenced on youth events is staying the same, which is there are no charge. So we're maintaining that policy going forward. The youth events, and then we've added the nonprofit, one meeting a month, which I believe was based on similar policy to the city department and as for their civic center. And that's important because we do get those requests from time to time, and we know those nonprofit groups, you know, the reason they have that status, they don't have a big bank account to pay for meeting space. So we think it'd be worthy for us to have that tool in our pocket when those situations erupt.
Perfect. Where are some of the youth events that are done?
So probably 90% of our youth events have to do with 4H, you know, that's right through the extension office, such as rodeos, those types of items, meetings, 4H meetings, FFA. But we also have, the youth policy comes into effect for the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, any youth, any youth event that doesn't require an entrance fee or a spectator.
Does that include those jackpots that they do for those showers?
Yes. So this weekend, if you're referring to the jackpot this weekend, which they had over 300 pigs, they had 100 pigs at this jackpot this weekend that the state fair has. So the jackpot is at no charge also. However, this weekend, we did have quite a bit of revenue from RV spaces. I believe we had probably $2,000 in RV spaces because those fees are not.
Madam Chair, when you talk about the youth, what age group are we talking about?
So it's 19 and under.
You're past that.
I was gonna say.
Cancel that event.
Any other questions or comments from the panel? Hearing done, then I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'd second that.
A first and a second, all in favor?
Madam Chair, I think to clarify, what I seconded was a motion to approve that we, the approval of the rate adjustment and contract updates for McGee Park is what I seconded.
It's the same thing, yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Close, okay, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. All right, now we have Mr. Stark, consideration of the June meeting schedule.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the March 15, 2022 County Commission meeting, the commission agreed to move the first meeting in June, which was scheduled for June 7 to today, to allow for the canvass of the primary election, which we've already approved. With the upcoming New Mexico County Summer Conference remainder this week, as well as knowing the majority of our year-end contract renewal has been done as a result of this meeting today, we would suggest canceling the June 21 meeting, which really isn't that far away and in light of the fact, I don't think we'd have much business for you to attend to. So in the event we had something come up, obviously, we still have a little bit of all special meeting if such a need arose. But otherwise, we would recommend canceling the June 21 meeting, which would make our next meeting July 5, the regular scheduled commission meeting.
Any questions or comments, please, Mr. Stark?
Madam Chair, I'd move that we approve the change to the June meeting schedule.
Second. Okay, a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, we have a report from the county manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple items for you, quick ones tonight. But first one I want to note, we received word from the Outdoor Recreation Division, ORD of the Economic Development Department, that we were one of the first 15 recipients of a Trails Plus Grant that you all had approved submission of a few months ago, maybe less than a few months ago. But it was for planning and some supplementary engineering as well as public input on connecting the trail systems that exist today in Farmington and Aztec through the Durango and Rio Grande Western Railroad Riteaway, the old Riteaway, it's still intact and in ownership by the county from Farmington to Aztec. So $250,000, we were one of the higher grant amounts. And so I, collective effort, of course, with the, our partners, the City of Farmington and the City of Aztec. And so nice to see that our application received that level of status thanks to Mr. Farrell, who helped coordinate that effort. I don't think I see him in the audience today, but appreciate his efforts and putting that all together. So the other item I wanted to bring your attention to, and have her come up, I know she doesn't want to. But we'd like to recognize Sue Hodgman. This will be her last commission meeting. She is retiring at the end of June. You know, she, some folks don't realize, she previously worked for us for the Alternative Sentencing Department and Jennifer and her team for seven or eight years. And now with, of course, all the work she's done as the first, county's first Behavioral Health Services Director, in helping to take the gap analysis that we, that you all had commissioned previously, to take it and start work on it and to develop and build out the mental wellness resource. We just recently received a word that we're gonna, at the July NACO conference, receive a national achievement award for the work that's been done there. And so, as I mentioned today in the staff meeting, nothing like going out on top. So I just want to thank Sue for her service to the county in total and just, you know, let her know how much we appreciate what she's done for this decision in San Juan County.
Thank you.
If you would like to do.
This is where you say, "Just kidding, I'm staying."
Like, can I say something?
You bet. You want to say that before or after they come down?
I don't care.
They're in process.
Mostly, I just wanted to say thank you for trusting me with this dream and this vision. I appreciate your faith in me. And I have to give credit where credit's due. My team did the work. My team is the one who opens the door every day, works with the people. Easy people, difficult people, they go home exhausted every day because of the work they put into it. And the reason we're getting our second award is the work they do. So thank you very much, and thank you, my team.
That's the end of my report.
Do we have any reports from elected officials or department heads?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I just wanted to brief you that we have hired a case manager, she started May 2nd, and we've got two half-days a week. She'll be working at the 7450 East Main with folks applying for housing, so we can catch them there as well if they, if housing folks identify them needing additional assistance or health insurance, we'll have case manager on staff. And we moved into what I'm calling the corner office now, which is the opposite end of the building as housing. So it started today, so they'll be there Monday mornings, 8:30 to 11:30, and Wednesday afternoons, 1:30 to 4:30.
Thank you.
I would like to ask manager Mike Stark how the staffing is looking now.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Sullivan, I believe Commissioner Sullivan, you were asking about staffing, I think generally countywide or more specific to, say, our detention center and sheriff's office?
Well, countywide or detention center, whatever we need.
Commissioner Sullivan, so generally countywide, actually, things have progressed quite well. We've actually seen an uptick in applicants. And with the exception of a couple specialized positions, some counselor positions, we've not been able to fill at alternative sentencing. We've actually done quite well with staffing to date. And we've actually seen improved progress with staffing at the detention center. I might lean on our HR director. She's like, no. But our vacancy rate has improved significantly there over time. And I think, you know, the sheriff's office, that's been another area of concern, has seen a couple of laterals come over here in recent. I think still down about 15, does that sound right? 16? So we have seen a little bit of progress there as well. But no, I appreciate you asking. And that's obviously a huge area of concern, not just in San Juan County, but obviously, that's a national concern. And like I said, we've seen things improve. like I said, we've seen things improve here a little bit more than we've seen even across the rest of the state, so. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
What about, what about the Chuckle Canyon Road?
Oh, sure, Madam Chair, Commissioner Sullivan. We, we're still working on that, and so you might recall, we did send the Navajo Nation President a letter regarding the maintenance of that road, specifically the last four miles from Escobada Wash into the park. We have not received a formal response back. That was a couple of years ago when the commission asked to send that letter. Since that time, we have looked at potential opportunities to look at improving that road on the county side, and we're working with the BLM to find a potential way that we could, we could look to maybe upgrade the road from gravel road to a chip seal road, which I know is, is something we pursued in the past, and so we're still working with the Bureau of Land Management folks here locally to see if there's an opportunity for us to, to pursue relative to that.
Okay, so what do we need to do then?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Sullivan, allow, allow staff some time to continue that conversation with the BLM, and then we could look to bring back a potential action item from, for you to consider once we have a better understanding of a, and if there is a path forward on doing something like that. Of course, that would require also an investment of capital funds from the county commission if, if there was a path forward there for us to pursue.
Well, do we need to have that on the agenda then, or?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Sullivan, if, if we can get information from the BLM that would allow it for it to be an action item, yes, we would absolutely bring that to you. We're just not in a position right now based on the information we have at hand to do that.
Okay.
But it's still being pursued. I do want you to know that.
And Mario Bridge?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Sullivan, we have hired the engineering firm through the grant we received from the state of New Mexico to have the alternative study done for the five-mile bridge. Mr. Perel unfortunately is not in the audience today. I do know that firm has started work. Eventually, they'll be able to bring forth a report that we would have a public meeting. We'll probably have that at the fire station out on 4990 and invite the community to come to that meeting and review the results of their work and provide us input and feedback, so I would look to see that later this summer, such an input meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
You bet.
Hey, Commissioner Tumochi.
Commissioners, I had the opportunity to meet with, is it Dr. Atwell?
Dr. Atwell, correct.
Atwell, who's with Northern Navajo Medical Center, and Mike, my Estes arranged us, and she's an amazing individual who goes out to the street people and she provides medical services. Sometimes she says she's even done a minor dental, because the, the street people, sometimes they don't go and get when they need medical attention, they don't go where they should to get help, but she's doing an amazing job and the county provided water for the Dr. Atwell and her workers, and I just learned from a friend who works at a homeless shelter, she volunteers in Cortez, and they're gonna hook up with Dr. Atwell and do the same thing over there. Yeah, people don't end up, you know, getting seriously ill out there on the street. These are wonderful people who go out and tend to them. I know they come across a lot of severe cases, and, you know, people out there sometimes under the influence I would think puts them in danger, but they, they do a wonderful job, and, and we're gonna kind of adopt them. So I don't know if you want to add anything else.
Sure, you bet. Commissioner Tumochi, Madam Chair. Yes, we were able to participate in a Zoom meeting with Dr. Atwell and her team. It's very unique that the IHS is allowing her to essentially take her practice from where she would normally be in Shiprock, out onto the streets, to provide this level of care. I believe they've treated 60 individuals, is that right, Commissioner? I think she's told us, to date, and it's, it's really kind of, it's an infancy stage. It's really kind of a pilot program, so they're trying to figure out, you know, what's working, what's not. Purpose of this meeting was to provide some information to the, to some of the key community leaders, but, but also to bring San Juan Regional Medical Center and Presbyterian Medical Services into the conversation to see how they can best coordinate, collaborate together, so. It was great to learn more about the program. I had no awareness of, of the program. I think most of the folks that were invited to the call had no awareness of such a program, and Sullivan providing some tremendous care and great results for those in need, so. And Mr. Mestas did provide through the local emergency planning committee some funding for the water and the Gatorade, the burritos, so we were able to use that source of funding to assist with their efforts.
And this initiative is Dr. Atwell and of course our famous Dr. Percy out there in Chilwell area, so. I know they care a lot about people, so we didn't know anything, but I'm glad that they. Thank you.
Anything else from elected officials or departments?
Seeing none, at this time, we can take comments or input from the general public. Comments are accepted in person within three minutes, and to subjects the commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. Is there anyone that'd like to speak to the commission?
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Hubbard, I'm a citizen of San Juan County, and I'd like to use my three minutes, first to say thank you and to give credit to wonderful people in this room. Second, to read a little bit of the New Mexico Constitution, and then to close with some comments. I received great news this afternoon. The Julian Fleming Memorial Scholarship is 95% funded and is, is expected to be fully funded by tomorrow night, and there's people in this room with Dave Jemmerstein. Thank you. Second, the great news about the trails. Oh, that makes me so happy. I've been, you're supporter of that. Good job. Good job. Okay. To the New Mexico Constitution. Article 20, miscellaneous, section 19, eight-hour day in public employment. Eight hours shall constitute a day's work in all cases of employment by and on behalf of the state or in any county or municipality thereof. Well, that changes a lot of things around here, and I think when that was enacted, a lot of people didn't realize that was part of, a part of law. But it's, it's good, because in my opinion, how can business take place if the store is closed? At the moment, our local governments are closed on Friday and Saturday. If we want to attract business, have investment in San Juan County, maybe we should have some hours open on Friday and possibly Saturday. Something to think of. Again, thank you, and I'll thank you regarding the Fleming Scholarship. It's, it's, it's a wonderful tribute to my pal. Those of you that might remember him, he is a career firefighter paramedic. He died young in the scholarship. It was a good thing. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good comment.
You do.
Are there any other comments this time? All right, at this time, we're gonna go into closed session. We're gonna do first, limited personnel management regarding to the county manager evaluation pursuant to section 10151 H2, and to discussion of purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property to Aztec Head Start Building at 805 Manic Aztec pursuant to section 10151 H8. Do you have a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Chair, I move we go into closed session to discuss those items you just mentioned.
So good. Have the first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
...
And I'm sure that we go back into our regular meeting from our closed session and just state that we didn't discuss anything beyond the limited personnel matter and the disposal of real property.
One second.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you.
I have your business side of number six.
That's perfect.
Sure.
Okay. Alright, so we have consideration of sale of Aztec Head Start property. Mr. Stark?
Thank you, ma'am chair, commissioners. San Juan County recently had the Aztec Head Start property located at 805 Maddox Avenue with Aztec recently appraised. The county commission during this previous closed session reviewed the appraisal and reviewed the current use of that facility. It's currently utilized by PMS to provide the Head Start services in Aztec. It has been the case since 1988. So the PMS has recently applied for a grant that would allow them to make improvements to the facility, but they would need to show clear ownership and title of the facility to do so. They've been made aware of the appraised price of $220,000 and they're interested in pursuing the purchase of that property. So as a result, we're bringing forth to you whether or not you agree of such disposition of property. If you do, it would require approval by the state board of finance since the amount of the disposal of real property is over $25,000. So with that, I can stand for any questions you would have relative to this matter.
Madam Chair, I'd move that we direct Mr. Stark to move forward with the sale of the Aztec Head Start property.
Second? Yeah, but first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay.
I would assume when there's the contract for sale, that that'll have to kind of be approved, or does that...
I think that by approving the matter that you've approved the contract, and I, yes, and I can have the chair sign it at that point.
And Madam Chair, I'd ask that we discuss the closed session matter, number one, the personnel matters regarding the county management evaluation.
Have the motion?
I, uh, just a second. Well, actually.
So, so.
Yeah.
We're just asking it to be addressed when we now.
Uh, that's where I'm moving. Um, I don't think you need a motion, but I think you can discuss it. When I've, I've looked at previous, uh, where you just go into the item, now that you've, you've noticed what the item is, you can sort of go ahead and discuss it.
Madam Chair, I'd move that we amend Mr. Stark's contract to reflect that he would be at a step eight dash one on the infant's contract.
A second?
Is there any other comments or questions about that? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, motion carries. Alright, thank you. Alright, so if there's not any other further comments or questions, then I will adjourn.